All right. This meeting. Hello, plug. This meeting of the Mawa Board of Education is open to members of the public to be physically present. Members of the public that attend will be asked to follow the same procedures as all other visitors to our schools. Those procedures can be found on the Agenda page of our website. Additionally, the board meeting will be livestreamed for viewing purposes only. Anyone wishing to view the meeting may do so by Zoom. The webinar ID for this meeting is 875-2447-5203, and the required password is 356460. All right, I call this meeting to order. Roll call Mr. Bleecker, please.
Thank you. Mr. De Silva.
Here.
Mr. Denise.
Here.
Mr. Gallo.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Mr. Kizmarsky.
Here.
Dr. Park.
Here.
Ms. Secon.
Here.
Ms. Davenara.
Here.
Super representative, we, super representatives could not be with us this evening, and Dr. Morthe.
Here. Adequate notice of agenda of this meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News and the Record specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on February 15, 2023, on the administrative offices, 60 Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. Copy was filed with the township board. Mr. De Silva, would you lead us into the lines?
Ladies and gentlemen, please rise, face the flag of our nation, place your right hand over your heart, and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. We will require an executive session in the beginning today of our meeting, so I need a motion to recess to exec. Mr. Gallo, seconded by Mr. De Silva, and we will be back shortly.
You dragged him with you?
How are you guys doing? Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. P. Hi, Josh.
Hi, how are you doing?
Good evening.
Hi.
Thank you.
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 Can we get the light now? Are you okay with that? Is that a yes?
Um, all right.
Can we do one?
Yeah, I was just going to do one. Are you coming with that?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that's good.
Uh-oh.
No, never mind. All right. All right, we'll just wait.
All right, we're back. I need a motion to reconvene to public action meeting. Mr. De Silva, second by Mr. Kizmarski. Agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. You are here representing a group. Please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please provide your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to fifteen minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. All right, a motion to open the meeting to the public. Mr. De Silva, second by Mr. Hughes. All right, we are officially open to the public. All right, seeing no one coming forward, motion to close the meeting to the public. Mr. Kizmarski, second by Mr. Gallo. All right, superintendent's report, Dr. Di Toro.
No, there's two things I want to share and then we'll get to the celebration. Hold on for one second. So this is something that we wanted to make a routine to show our appreciation. I'm very happy to report to the board, we had another donation. This one was from a local business and also a parent. So, Mr. Johann Jativa is a plant manager at Nobel BioCare. Nobel BioCare is a world leader in innovative implant-based dental restorations. They've been in business for sixty-five years. Not only did they, were they generous with the donation, they donated ten portable whiteboards for Ramapo Ridge and at the high school, and we're very, very grateful for that. So thank you very much for that. In addition to that, Mr. Jativa said that he's very interested in joining our Thunderbird partnership and adding to our internship and externship experience. So Mr. Pascal has that contact information. He is reaching out. Having a local, a local business, working with things like this, we feel like we really open doors for our kids. So it's something that we're looking into immediately and hopefully, hopefully we can onboard them for this summer. So I just want to thank not only the parent, Mr. Johann Jativa, but Nobel BioCare. That's number one. Number two, and I think I'm going to take Mr. Gallo's comments, but I'll do it anyway. Today was our Ramapo Ridge Middle School Girls Championship game that was held at Holger Middle School. Let me tell you a little bit about the game and then there's an event that took place yesterday that I would love to share with the board. Our girls played incredibly well this year. Again, it's worth repeating, this is our first year back with middle school sports. And our girls team had an incredible season. They won their first round and second round of the playoffs. Our crowd is absolutely tremendous with our kids and our parents and community members. At home, they come out and they're absolutely wild, like wild in a good way. Wonderful, they're cheering, a lot of energy. I didn't know how it was going to go today. Went there and our side of the stands was absolutely packed with our kids. We had a large number of staff members there. We had parents, we had community members, we had board members there. It was a tremendous game. They went down right off the bat. They battled back. Went to halftime down two, went down in the third quarter significantly and came just rolling back. Ended up losing thirty-six to thirty-two, but it was an incredible, incredible game. So I just wanted to say how much I'm proud of the girls. They worked extremely hard. It was a very intense situation today. I've never seen a middle school game with that much energy on both sides. And they handled themselves with nothing but class and they made Mawa extremely proud. So Mr. Kale, or Coach Kale, and the girls, I just want to say thank you to all of them for making it exciting for all of us to cheer on our middle school sports. A little aside, Mr. Corey, Ms. Whalen, and the entire PE department yesterday put on a pep rally for the kids. If you remember correctly, for the soccer team, we had the band come down, they walked through the halls. Well, this time they changed it up a little bit. Basketball team, they did it in the, in the gym. So they had a bunch of challenges. If you check social media, they posted on social media, they had staff versus student challenges, they had the boys' team versus the girls' team challenges. It was wonderful to see the kids out there, the entire school was cheering them on. We had various teachers hitting three pointers. We had, which they showed up, and I got to tell you, we should get them uniforms because there's a lot of great jumpers with them. And it was just such a great experience for our middle school kids. When you're talking about the social, emotional aspect of our education, there was such a positive energy there. And I just want to thank everyone who was involved in making that special event happen because the team was celebrated, the kids, all the kids, six through eight, got a chance to enjoy their time and see their teachers out there. A number of students outside of the basketball team, they were able to take part in the basketball challenges. So it really looped in everybody who was involved in, in the school. So it was just a really nice addition to a great season. So yet again, I know I said this a million times, thank you so much for allowing us to bring back middle school sports. Thank you. And now more exciting stuff. Just to give you a little bit of framework before we get started, and this kind of just talks to the first two slides and then I'll stand up and I'll, and I'll really go into the presentation. Back in twenty twenty, actually back in twenty nineteen, we were able to present to the board our idea of creating a strategic plan. We felt at the time, there were a number of great things that were happening in Mawa, but we also felt like there was a lot of work to be done. And we still do, there's still a lot of work to be done. But we felt like with all the different schools, all of our six schools, they were working hard within their school to make sure that their school was the best school that it could be. But we felt like the one thing that we needed was a blueprint to really guide us in making sure that we're building a school district that meets the expectation of our community, but also meets the expectation of our board and, and, and the staff, because everyone takes great pride in being a part of this district. During that strategic plan building process, we were able to engage a large number of community members, a large number of teachers, a large number of students, to get their ideas of what would be best to build our students to make them successful after they leave Mawa Public Schools. And along the way, what experiences can we provide to ensure that it's high level and they can perform at, at the, at the highest level and compete with students not only in, in Bergen County and/or New Jersey, but, but around the country. That being said, can we just go to the next slide? That being said, the blueprint runs, yes, please, the blueprint runs, would I make you uncomfortable if I stand?
No, come on over there.
I didn't mean to kick you out. That being said, we created that five-year strategic plan. Just for everyone's awareness, because this is something that's going to be coming down the pike, in twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, it'll be our last year of our strategic plan. We will be doing the build process again for our next strategic plan. Because as we all know, we can't, we're not going to accomplish everything in five years. It's my hope that we accomplish all the things that we put in our strategic plan within those five years, but we're always looking to see, are there new things? Are there better things? Are there adjustments that need to be made to our practice to continue to compete, to put forth the best product for everyone? So, I'm sorry, can you just go back for one second? We're going to put this on a website, I just want to kind of walk you through the different aspects of this. Down here, this is our progress monitoring website. We put this together because we know, even though we're doing presentations, if people want more information, it's an opportunity to see all of the work that we're doing. All the frames are going to be, are going to be detailed here, but if you click in the frame, you'll see the different goals within each frame. We have progress monitoring bars, which we have not updated to meet this, this specific update. We're going to do that at the end of the year, but it really keeps us focused on making sure that we're spreading our efforts across all the different frames of our strategic plan. So I just wanted to, to remind everyone that we have that in place. When you start to click through that, which Dr. Fair just did, not only are there the progress monitoring bars, but there's more granular information of the work that's been done. Because as we said, our goal is transparency. We want to make sure not only we talking about it, but there's evidence behind it to show that the work is being done. Thank you, Dr. Fair. So, with that, if you can just go to the next slide. With that, I'm going to speak to curriculum and instruction. As we all know, there's, there's four different frames. There's the curriculum and instruction frame, there's the SEL frame, there's the facilities frame, and there is the community connections frame, okay? Within the curriculum and instruction frame, it really talks about our, our ideas of creating, no, you're perfect, this is perfect, our ideas of looking at our instruction and making sure that it's hitting all of the indicators of what best practice is. Are we creating, are we creating innovative experiences for our students? Are they able to collaborate? Are they able to utilize technology at a high level? Not just technology for technology's sake. Are we creating high-level experiences for them to make sure that they're exposed to it and they're able to navigate it? So I have two slides that I'm going to, I'm going to just try to spotlight, but I just want to anchor into the first two, because we've said this before, I've said this to the board in private, and I'm going to say it to the community. Amazing things are happening here in Mawa, and it's about time for people to know what Mawa is all about. So most recently, we received an award, which we touched on at the last meeting, but because we're doing a strategic plan update, I think it's worth repeating. Most, recently, we were recognized by the IT EEA, which is the International Technology and Engineering Educators Association. We just received an award for Mawa High School. They were, they were honored as a school of excellence. What that, obviously people are going to say, what does that even mean? The IT EEA STEM Center of Teaching and Learning recognizes outstanding schools for their commitment to providing robust, integrative STEM, and for anyone who doesn't know, science, technology, engineering, and math education program. Schools recognized, exemplify outstanding leadership in the field of STEM education, recognize schools undergo a rigorous application process requiring detailed documentation to demonstrate a strong, integrative STEM program. A panel of reviewers will reach out, will reach consensus that the documented evidence represents excellence in integrative STEM education. The IT EEA created the designation as a way to officially recognize those schools whose teachers, administrators, and other stakeholders are providing a meaningful STEM education experience for the students. By highlighting these schools, IT EEA hopes to help others learn effective best practices and continue sharing them more broadly into the larger STEM educational community. So that's our first recognition. Why am I saying first?
Because there's more.
Because there's more. If you look at the second bullet point, within the last week, we were just honored and we were just considered, we were just named Future Ready Certified. What does Future Ready Certified mean, you may ask? Future Ready Certification, I'm sorry for reading, but it's worth giving you all the detail. Future Ready Certification, the team that developed this specific application was Dr. Fair, Dr. Linda Bavina, Ms. Ruth Davis, and a large number of teachers across the district, inclusive of the media specialists. They all came together, they took a look at what our current functioning is, they spotlighted the things that we were doing, but they also started to talk about what we needed to do in the future. A little bit about the Future Ready Program. At the heart of Future Ready Schools and the Interactive Planning Dashboard is the Future Ready Framework, a robust structure for digital learning, visioning, planning, and implementation focused on student-centered learning. The research, the research-based framework emphasizes collaborative leadership and creating an innovative school culture. All content focuses on seven areas, which I'll talk about in a little bit, and, and as referenced gears, plus leadership, each of which is addressed during the comprehensive planning process. Mawa Schools has undergone this planning process to create an action plan, unique to our school district, and ultimately keep student learning at the heart of our decision-making. This action plan will serve as the roadmap for our school district in the months and years ahead, as we work to ever improve our instructional programs, technology integration, and the shared leadership requires to, to implement all instruction amongst our pre-K twelve programs and across our six buildings. The different gears that I was talking about on the top are curriculum instruction and assessment, personalized professional learning, robust infrastructure, budget and resources, community partnerships, data and privacy, and use of space and time. So these two awards, if you go to our website, will, will be visible on our homepage. We'll also make sure that we have things up around the school district to make sure anyone who comes in knows that we are recognized for these awards. And finally, we wanted to wait to present this to the board, we'll be sending out communication on the Future Ready Certification in the coming days. If you, if you remember, we already sent out the information about the IT EEA recognition. So I'm happy to say that we're doing this. I'm going to go through the rest very quickly because this is something that we talked about at other meetings, but it's worth talking about now. This is a-
Dr. Di Toro, could I just jump in real quick? Just since we're bragging, and rightfully so, our action plan for the district, the Future Ready President asked if they could use our action plan as an exemplar for other districts. So it's going to be placed on their website as well to serve as a, as a model, if you will.
That was a fantastic addition.
Pretty impressive.
Thank you for that. So this, this next piece, we've talked about. As a collective team, we talked about instructional, we're constantly looking at what we can do to make sure that we're individualizing our approach for every student that's sitting in front of us, specific to the academics and the learning experience. As a district, and I just want to take a moment to thank all the administrative team and thank our teachers, because this is a tremendous amount of work, but it's worth doing, because what it's allowing us to do is take a look at all of our students, the students in front of us, to understand who they are as learners, and we're able to adjust our instruction to, to, to get to them where they are and build their foundational skills. So what we're doing is, we're utilizing data teams at every single school building. Those data teams are taking a look at various data points and assessments that are being administered, administered. Those are aligned to the different standards that we're obligated to teach, depending on the grade level. With that information, they're going back to the different teams, grade levels, and departments, and spotlighting areas of proficiency, and they're celebrating that. But most importantly, they're saying, what are our areas of growth? And they're creating plans and focus plans to, to intentionally teach to those specific deficits. That's ongoing work, this is our first year doing it, and I have to say, we were able to finish our first cycle of, of plans, and, and the improvements across all the different grade levels are something that we're, we're very, very proud of. So that's, that's one piece. The cohort testing analysis is something that we've talked about. At the central office level, we're taking a look at the state testing, we're taking a look at the different demographic subgroups to see how they performed at the different, the different assessments that were administered to see, does that create some sort of awareness or understanding for us of what we could do differently to support those specific students? This is something that is an ongoing effort, this is our in-house professional development days. This is something that we plan as an administrative team. We, the first, the first two days of school, we get a chance to understand what are our goals for the year, and we provide clarification and support to our, to our teachers, to, to get them off, off the ground so they can execute it. The October days, we've really focused on data teams, what they are and how they're going to benefit our teaching. And most recently, in January, that's something that we put together, this specific structure we put together probably about seven years ago, that it's, that's really teacher-driven. What that means is, we asked the teachers, what are some topics that you would like to learn more about? But not only that, we gathered that information, we know that we have incredible teachers within our district. So we have our own teachers and administrators delivering that professional development. So like I said before, the teachers pick what they want to go to, but also the teachers and administrators are delivering that training to our, to our staff. Something that we want to talk about that is going to be ongoing for the remainder part of this year, that might spill into next year, but worth noting, we're constantly looking at what we can do differently and how we can continue to improve our instruction, as I said. I'm happy to report the Ramapo Ridge Middle School ELA Department and Math Department identified that there are different structures that they can put into place, instructionally, in some sort of workshop model type of approach, that they'll be able to work in small groups and individualize their instruction. They wanted to take a look at different surrounding districts that have that in place already. So our supervisors took a team of teachers to various middle schools to see it in action. They came back, they're in the process of really talking through what they saw and how they can implement that here in the district. I really find this approach to be extremely effective because it allows the teachers and the supervisors to talk through what will work best for our students here. So hopefully that will create some shifts in our instructional approach to continue to build that individualized model. We also have some updated, we're going to add some courses next year to our business department. I just want to spotlight two. We have an Honors AP course, it's called Advanced Marketing. It's a dual enrollment course for our business pathway. We also have our fundamentals, I know I'm getting wordy, Fundamentals of Investing. It's an elective course, it's also for our business pathway. Just to explain to you our business pathway, it's part of our Pathways Program at the high school, before I, I stop, there's three areas of focus for our business pathway. There's the accounting, finance, investing area focus, we have our business law and economics focus, we also have our advertising, advertising, marketing, and sports management focus. So that's something that is, if you recall, the Pathways Program started a couple years back, we continue to refine and make that even, make that the highest level that we possibly can provide. These are our two, our two awards. These are just some pictures spotlighting the work that's happening. We have the academic decathlon, we have our coaches at the elementary level in action, and then over here, we just have a publishing party at the element, not just, we have a publishing party at the elementary level. And this just talks about the collaborative experiences that we have going on at the middle school, and we also have our infusion of, of text that matches the, the students in which we serve. Thank you.
It was great. Thank you, appreciate it. Well, our social, emotional, learning component, in my opinion, is what creates our well-rounded student and embodies the whole student from the academic to the individual. And as you know, we have goals that are related to having students become one within our community, to find places within our community, we have means by which to offer professional development to our staff, and we ensure that we're building our students prepared to enter the world as individuals, yet members of community. So some of the highlight for the course of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year up until this point is of course something that, point of pride that Dr. Di Toro has already spoken about, and that's our middle school introduction of after-school sports. And we just want you to realize here that that absolutely meets our SEL expectations in so many ways, whether you're on the court or off the court, whether you're attending or you're just discussing it after the pep rally, it is a means by which to create students who become part of a total community. We are working and continuing on our mindfulness cohort three training, so these are our teachers who are being trained, as well as the trainers are going into our classrooms and modeling for teachers on SEL activities around mindfulness. What's crucial is that we anticipate that this will be the last cohort that's actually trained by an outside consultant, because we ultimately believe that our strength exists within our district, as you'll see the third bullet, the SEL coaches, who are right now modeling for colleagues and leading initiatives for Mindful March. But what's crucial is that these members and coaches become our future trainers in our district, so that as new members join our district, they will have colleagues that can model all of the techniques that we once required the use of an outside consultant for. Another example of SEL is that we created the Zen Den at the Joyce Kilmer School, and various elementary classrooms have calming corners, places where students can go, take a breath, re-regulate, chat with each other, have, have the opportunity again to bring that whole learning experience to the whole child. So here we are, where we're able to see that NJTSS doesn't just rest in the academic domain. We have an NJTSS cohort who is designed to address the SEL, and that is specific to learner behaviors, SEL behaviors, and factors that positively or negatively impact student learning. We, we have coined the phrase learner behavior here in Mawa, we're not going to let it go, and that is basically all of the metacognitive skills, the skills that it takes to be a student in our district, be it how do you organize a binder, to how do you use your locker in middle school, those are all crucial learner behaviors that when one doesn't have it, the rest of the curriculum just can't fall into place. So we have the cohort this year, not digging in as deeply as the data teams are in the instructional area, but rather phasing it in the work, once we master it from an instructional level, we'll move on to our SEL cohorts, and part of that is identifying a uni, a universal screening instrument that's going to give us information about where our learners are, not in the area of reading, writing, and arithmetic, but all of those learner behaviors that are crucial to being a member of our community and ultimately a graduate of our system. And then lastly, the board was very generous in funding a second guidance position in our elementary level. So in the K five, right now, we have two elementary positions, and those two individuals have spent the year obviously doing whole group, individual, and classroom instruction. We've worked in areas of a morning group, developing friendships, monitoring your space, being a member of character ed, and perseverance was also one that we worked with our students on. So that's a snapshot of our twenty-two, twenty-three school year. On the left, you see the Zen Den in action, and on the right, you see an example of a mindful activity in which students are basically articulating something during the holiday season that they're thankful for.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Our third frame consists of our community connections. So I'm, I'm really proud of this slide, and that we've referenced the Thunderbird Partnership Program over and over again, and that's all been designed on purpose. You know, we have found that if students can see themselves in the future, right, they can find their purpose here, and we believe that's really important for, for every child. So we believe that the Thunderbird Partnership Program has been able to provide students with an opportunity to see themselves beyond Mawa or Mawa Schools. So we're really proud in that we've had participation in every one of our school buildings. Last year, we had two hundred thirty-four established partnerships, and of those two hundred thirty-four, we had one hundred six visits. So as of the creation of this presentation, which was about two weeks ago, we had thirty-three visits thus far this school year. I know that we've just booked about fifteen since then, which is very much on par as to where we were our last school year. So we continue to find more experts to serve as resources for our students and our teachers and our classrooms and supplement our curriculum in that way. The second piece is our dual enrollment program. We've been creating additional courses, I know Dr. Di Toro had referenced a few courses that are being created as a result of student interest, and just to make our program that much more robust and provide our students with additional options. So we're working on additional partnerships with outside post-secondary programs to provide our students with additional opportunities to earn college or post-secondary credits, so when they're graduating from our district, they have some, some credits to fall back on. Our second piece is, we have done a lot of work with our ESL, ELL families who are new to our, new to our township. We have instituted talking points, which is tech, technology that allows our teachers to connect and communicate efficiently with our families in their native language through text message, photos, and video. This two-way communication tool makes our families feel welcomed, valued, and members of our schools and greater community. We've also been making a conscious effort to intentionally create those opportunities for our younger and older students to connect, connect from school building to school building. I know that we've talked about Language Buddies and Pen Pals at both the secondary and elementary programs, and we'll have more opportunities- And we'll have more opportunities to speak to later in the school year when we close out year three of our strategic plan. We've also, as everyone is fully aware, we've undergone an equity audit that we will have that report in approximately two months. We will obviously speak to that a little further when we, when we get to that point. So here you can see Mrs. Corella, our supervisor of our ESL program. She has posted about our adult ESL classes that we're really proud of. They're very well-attended and serve as a really valuable resource for our adults, our parents to learn the language, but also to connect in that way. We also have our JK Student Council that posted about food drives and, and things of that nature during the holidays. And our local fire department, you can see here on the left, visited Lenape Meadows, so we have those local connections there. Our wise women in science and engineering visited our, our young women in, who are looking to pursue careers in STEM as part of our GEMS organization here at Mawa High School. And then also, we've referenced this at a previous board meeting where we had Ms. Jasmine Worga, who is an author, come to visit our students to speak about a book that they had just completed reading.
Okay, good evening. For the fourth frame of the strategic plan, the facilities frame, what we are addressing here, our goals are listed on top. To briefly go over each one of the individual goals below to regularly evaluate our learning spaces, to update them, and make sure that any outdated or underutilized spaces are addressed, and to allocate funds yearly in a very thoughtful manner to ensure that when we are developing our facility and capital project plans year over year, that we are regularly thinking about the other frameworks of the strategic plan, making sure that we're tying back to them. And to make sure that we're doing this, again, not only for our spaces inside the walls, inside the classrooms, but outside as well. We've done a lot of work over the last few years, but we wanted to just specifically highlight some of the larger scale items that are being done this year in the 22, 23 year. We've spoken about some other items earlier on that we've completed over the summer. But again, to focus on some of the larger items, one of the largest that recently came to full completion is the HVAC upgrade project at Joyce Kilmer School. This was done for 16 classrooms in the 300 wing of the school, where the services to the most classrooms, heating and air conditioning, some were provided by unit ventilators that were along the walls and underneath the windows, others were provided by window air conditioning units. This update and renovation has now allowed both systems to be housed in one unit, offering better access to the window, windows and better control over the systems as well. One of the things that lacked here was a good overall central control, so we have that now. And the time and effort that we spent in looking at the JK system has really paid off because this system, not only the control side of it, but for the physical HVAC unit as well, we spent a lot of time because we wanted to use this as a template for other HVAC projects that we have going forward. To make sure that the systems that we have here were successful and then can be implemented when we have other HVAC projects. So we can have a more consistent infrastructure throughout the district and all our schools. Another project, oh, Dr. Fair, if you wouldn't mind, thank you. The Mawa High School Grandstand Project. The grandstand has served the community and our student athletes wonderfully over the last almost 60 years from the late 1960s when it was built. But it was ready for an, an upgrade and to be updated. So we are very excited to see that project go on, just, just down the driveway here. That's going to improve access to the area, it's going to improve the experience for our spectators and for the student athletes who perform there. Also, one of the things that we wanted to make sure while we had it there previous, but wanted to make sure we can enhance it was any ADA access to the facility for anybody that may require it. The last item on this slide, we have a few more in the next, the last one on this one is completion of a window project at Ram Po Ridge, Betsy Ross, and George Washington Elementary Schools. That project was plagued a little bit with some supply chain issues and getting some of the materials in. As many, many things have, have happened over the last year or so. But very thankful that Ram Po Ridge and George Washington Schools have been completed. The contractor just recently started in Betsy Ross School, and that should be completed very soon. So with the, the warm weather that we've had recently, being able to, in a more efficient way, open up and operate the windows has been great for those students and for those classrooms. The last few things that we want, that I wanted to discuss here is just that, to remind the board and the community that we're not pausing at all, we're continuing to regularly update our plans as it pertains to a schedule for our HVAC roofing, paving areas, as well as other areas as well. But these are some, some we wanted to highlight. It's not, definitely not a set it and forget it type method where we're establishing it in, at the onset and then sticking to that plan, that plan regularly will have to evolve. It's, it's a living document, different circumstances may dictate us to make adjustments, and we're constantly looking at that. Always going back to separate from the strategic plan, but it was done, really in unison with it, when this was done in 2020, was a facility audit, working with LAN Associates based in Midland Park for having them come in. It was the first time we had worked with LAN in this capacity. It was great to see them be a true independent set of eyes to go through our buildings, our facilities, our fields, and really look to see where, from that fresh perspective, we can, we can improve in, in areas that we might want to focus on. They gave us a very detailed report, and we're constantly going back to that report, crossing out the ones that we've been able to address, and, and using that as a base when we are considering new projects to, to come on. And lastly, certainly not least, is a recent bid award, I mentioned the HVAC project before, that we did at Joyce Kilmer School. The next area to address HVAC, it was George Washington Elementary School. Again, another school where we have good, really good HVAC systems currently, but there's the opportunity to make it better from both a mechanical perspective, as well as an overall control perspective too. So that project was bid and awarded just at our last Board of Ed meeting. We're looking forward to that project occurring this summer, summer of 23. And as we've done with our other frames, pictures are worth a thousand words, so we wanted to give a few pictures and highlights of some of the projects that are going on. Over on the left, our new bleacher project. At this point in those pictures, the old bleachers had been removed, and we've completed doing the piers and posts for the new bleachers. In the middle here, we have, and this is thanks also to our partnership with the Mawa Schools Foundation. They've been great in partnering with us with different projects over the years. The middle school was able to create a, an improved outdoor learning space just outside of the arc classroom in the back of the building there. Again, thanks to the Mawa Schools Foundation, and I think maybe in coordination with the HSO as well, that contribute funds to make that space happen. And in the bottom right, over at Betsy Ross Elementary School, again, another area that we saw could be utilized in, in perhaps a better way and created another outdoor learning environment for the students over at Betsy Ross.
So all of the information that we, that we've discussed is consistently being updated on our strategic plan website. And obviously, as we, as we come into the spring and we provide the board and our community with an additional update, we will certainly update all of those progress bars, as well as the information connected to each goal, as Dr. Dettoro has already referenced.
That's all we have. Is there, are there any questions?
Get back to the two awards. Did the district or the organizations issue a press release on this?
No, no, we did not. We just received the awards within the last two or three weeks, we informed the community. But we met with the Community Relations Committee a week back, two weeks back, and that's definitely an area of focus for us.
Firstly, I just wanna say, I have tremendous amount of gratitude for the ambition of our district. There's obviously a whole bunch of things we could be doing that we've sort of dispersed our energies. But the blueprint really does focus on our efforts and the vast resources we have amongst our teachers, our parents, our administrators, our supervisors, who have a vast wealth of, of experience and knowledge to help our kids. And the blueprint really helps us focus that. And the fact that we're, we have the ambition and perseverance to pull, to carry it out is a real tribute to your leadership. Just one quick question on science in the elementary grades. I noticed there was a little bullet on, I think there was social studies and math emphasis, but I would encourage some additional science focus in our elementary program. So maybe you wanna speak to that?
Yeah, Dr. Bavino.
And not science, but science mindset. Because the tests that we, everybody sort of says, oh, we're doing not that well in, are not about science. They're about science mindset. And to start sprinkling that into our lower grades so that over time we'll see that sort of sprout in, in, in the whole range of K through 12 education.
So there's two sides to that answer, and I'm glad you brought that up. Dr. Bavino is currently working with the administrators, and then will engage the teachers in that curriculum writing and curriculum evaluation process for, for those grade levels. Also, she's working with the administrators and will be engaging teachers along the lines of the resources that we're gathering to utilize in the classroom. So there's that one piece along the lines of the curriculum. The other piece when you're talking about, that's, I believe you said, science-minded. I, I've said it before, and again, it's worth repeating, I know they said that already today, but it works for this as well. For the science piece of this, you're absolutely right. It's not about teaching to a test, it's about teaching to a thought process and an analysis side of it. So when you're looking at the different experiences that we're trying to expose our students at, even at, at the kindergarten level, there are two, there are two specific experiences that, actually three, that we're, that we're looking at. The first is the, the science curriculum, and how we're looking at that information and analyzing that information and really discussing that information, that's number one. The second piece is our, is our STEAM curriculum, whether it be our maker space, or whether it be the coding aspect of it. That starts down in kindergarten and works its way up all the way through to 12th grade. And what we're really focusing on with our, let's just talk about our elementary students, is infusing that engineering and design-minded process. And with that, it really talks to looking at the information, analyzing the task or the challenge, and really developing that in the way that you think is most effective. There's no absolute recipe of you have to do it this specific way, which allows them to really look at it and decide what's our best path. But more importantly, not just creating a product, but throughout that process, and even after the process, of being able to explain what you did. Because oftentimes, people come to their, their, their conclusion or come to their answer, and we can't accept the, because I did it that way. And challenging them to explain what they did and how, how that end product would have been impacted if we adjusted this part of this task, challenges them to think and explain and, and analyze things in very, in many different ways. And we feel like those types of experiences are gonna continue to build that proficiency, even outside that science class. And I'm not, not discounting it, but I'm saying there's other opportunities and touchpoints throughout their experience that can build their proficiency that will reap those benefits. So that's an ongoing process. And last but not least, that alignment needs to happen as well, it can't be happening in isolation. So Dr. Bavino and the supervisors are working on articulating, having articulation opportunities, K three, K three and four five, four five, six eight, and then six eight, nine twelve, to make sure that there's a logical progression and there's not dips or, or breaks in the progression.
Thank you.
No problem.
So I, I appreciate the, you know, the opportunity to have this presentation because this is really, it's kind of a peek behind the curtain, right? I mean, the, the idea is to have kids come to school and to leave successfully, right? To, to learn, to, you know, learn all the things that they need to, to be successful in life. In order to do that, our teachers have to have all the tools, you know, between the facilities, PD, like whatever they need to make that happen. And if we're doing a good job, it all is supposed to look seamless, right? So it's kind of like the, you know, the, the swan on top of the lake, right? Like just kind of cruising along and just paddling like crazy underneath. This is the paddling like crazy underneath part, so that the rest of it really looks, really looks seamless. And I, I think Mike put it really well with the, just the ambition of the district. I do want to, to highlight the ITEA award. And that one I wanna call out because this is something that I've had the opportunity to kind of have a privacy to, to watch develop, right? When we, when we decided, or when the idea came up that we want to build our STEAM facility, right? It was, there was a lot of, well, you know, walking around campus and, and well, where do we think it can go? We kind of, you know, figure out where we want it to go, and then, you know, what's, what's it gonna look like inside? What, what do we want to be able to do in the building physically, like what's the inside physically look like? Then once we committed to that building, even a little bit before that, the conversations were, okay, what is the curriculum that's going to go into this building? Like, we can build the building, and it can be awesome. But if you don't have the curriculum and everything to go into that building, it's just a building. So, you know, the, the curriculum began even before that, that started. I know there were, there were a couple of semesters where John was trying to figure out, you know, we have stuff that we're ready to, to pull the trigger on. We have to find someplace in the high school to start because this isn't ready yet. And really, it's, it's, it's a tribute to the entire project, not just the physical building, but the thought process between, you know, behind, what's gonna go in there, what are we gonna use it, how do we maximize this space? And I think that this, you know, the designation of a school of excellence is really kind of the culmination of that and, and evidence of, you know, exactly. It's, it was a thoughtful, intentional process that brought us to this conclusion. And that's, you know, I just, I think that's awesome to be able to watch and to really, you know, to see that, that process play out.
I, I, I agree with you 100%, and it's something that we're constantly talking to Mr. Pascal, we're talking to the supervisors about. And I, and again, I, I said this earlier today, I'll say it again. Our teachers are absolutely tremendous in, in their focus, their efforts, and really in, in their commitment to what we're trying to do. Oftentimes, a supervisor or a teacher will come to us and say, you know, I, I found this, and I would love to, I would love to look into it more. We say all the time that, just like you said, we don't wanna just have the building just because it looks good. Our goal is to make sure that we're, we're putting programs that fit that building and really do it justice. That being said, we constantly say to John, which I'm sure gives him gray hair, you know, we're trying to create students at the K eight level that are outthinking that building. So as we shared in this presentation, even though five years ago, that building opened, that, that curriculum that was established, we're constantly looking at it and adjusting it because we have different learners coming up, or different opportunities that we have available to us. So that's a commitment that we have to you, we have to our community, and more importantly, our students, to make sure that we're, we're looking to see, are we maximizing the potential of that experience for our kids? And like I said before, our teachers do such a wonderful job of creating those special moments and special courses and special experiences for them. So we're gonna continue to lean on that, and continue to make sure that it's the best product that we can, that we can provide.
All right. Thank you very much for the comprehensive presentation. That was, I mean, and it's, you know, it's, it's good to see where we are, where we're going. And I, I think it really gives us as a board a great perspective on, you know, all the things that are happening. So thank you, Dr. Dettoro, Dr. Fair, Mr. Bleeker, and Ms. Rizzo for your very comprehensive presentation. Do appreciate it. Okay, so Mr. Bleeker, do you have a report for us this evening? Additional report for us this evening?
Yes, I do, I have a couple things to highlight on, highlight that are on the agenda, as well as a, another topic to bring up in our goal to meet the board's goals. I've learned a little bit more about the operations within the district. So I have one of those and a few updates, I will make it as brief as I can. Firstly, and foremost, one of the big things happening right now for the business office for the district is development of the budget for next year, for 23, 24. Just wanna give a brief update at our next board meeting on March 8th. We do anticipate having the preliminary budget on that agenda. We have, have to maintain and follow some state guidelines, some state statutes where the overall budget has where the overall budget has to be submitted to the county no later than March 20th. With how our board meeting schedule falls, March 8th would be the meeting that we would approve the preliminary budget. So barring anything unforeseen from Trenton, any delays or anything from there, for the board's awareness as well as any members of the public, March 8th is when we'll have the preliminary budget on. As a reminder, that is just a preliminary budget for us to submit to the county. We still have the opportunity to make any changes or modifications to that that we might need to before our final budget is adopted at the end of April. A couple of items that are on the agenda that I wanted to highlight. One is CNM Door. I mentioned that during the strategic plan presentation as well. That project is going, going very well. Again, as there were some delays earlier on, they've completed all the work at Ramapo Ridge and George Washington Elementary School. We're going through the process of punch lists right now. Our architect, as well as Mr. Romero, has gone through and developed any punch list items for the contractor to take a look at. And they are aggressively working on those while also doing Betsy Ross currently as well. The contractor has been working second shift work, so coming in after the students and staff leave, working through the evening hours, then making sure everything is cleaned up for the next day. And very happy with their work so far. There's been zero issues or complaints with how the state with classrooms is left for instruction the next day. So been really good work with them. They're currently at Betsy Ross right now and should be wrapping it up sometime in the next couple of weeks in early March. So again, happy, good update there. For Wallkill Construction, who's the company that's doing the bleacher renovation project, also, things have been going well there. That has been doing part to Mother Nature, working on our side for that project. I would be remiss if I didn't mention that. We are still on schedule for all of the preliminary work, underground work on piers, on posts, on building the storage units that are going to be below the bleachers. Those will all be done and completed before the steel and the material for the new bleachers arrive. So that way, when it does arrive, we can very quickly transition to assembly of the new structure. Again, we're still on schedule, as had been reported before, for this material to arrive mid to late April. Construction would take about one month after that and should be wrapped up by the end of the school year. So we're on a good pace, good schedule with that. Also, not associated directly with the bleachers, but something to immediately follow is a resurfacing of our track. That also is, we've been working with Mr. Pelletier with a contractor to make sure that that project is not going to impact our spring sports, which it will not. It should begin shortly after spring sports ends. Again, a late May, early June timeframe for that. We're still a little ways out to determine exact dates, but that's what we're looking for for that. Again, we're, good progress, good progress there. And then lastly, again, mentioned a little bit during the strategic plan update is the George Washington HVAC unit, which we recently bid. We have a kickoff meeting with the contractor scheduled for the first week of March with us and for engineers to again lay all the groundwork for that project for the summer. Going on to the update, when looking at things to update, I grabbed this idea from having our most recent transportation committee meeting where we spoke about the topic in the area of Region One. And I realized in having that meeting, some board members, some members of the public, I know we mentioned the words Region One often throughout some of our board meetings. There's often resolutions that pertains to them on the agenda. But it's something that is very unique to Mawa, us being the lead agency for this organization. So I wanted to spend a couple of minutes just speaking about the region and how that operation has come to be and what its role is for the district and what's Mawa's role is for governing and overseeing that organization. So for Region One, Region One, the official name for Region One is the Northwest Bergen Council for Special Education. It's an organization that was established in the 1960s. Trying to go back and find an exact date it was established, but couldn't find one. But I do have bylaws that were established in 1979 as an indication of how long the organization has been around. There are different regions throughout Bergen County. Region Five is based in River Edge. Region Two is based over in Pascagoula. There are other regions also throughout, throughout the county. The original concept and idea behind the region, behind all the regions, were to establish different local school districts where they can specifically look at efficiencies for special education, whether that was transporting students to districts, transporting students to out-of-district placements if there were, finding efficiencies if Mawa, Ramsey, and maybe Whitecoff had students going to one particular school that was an out-of-district placement. If there can be efficiencies with one bus route that might go through all those communities, pick up the students and bring them to their, to their school of choice. The Region One, we are made up of 15 different member districts. There are six K-12 districts. They are Mawa, Ramsey, Waldwick, Ridgewood, Nillam Park, and Glen Rock. And the remaining nine districts are comprised of two regional Board of Educations, high school Board of Educations, and then the districts that feed into them, the K districts that feed into them. The two regional high school districts are Ramapo Indian Hills and Northern Highlands. And again, the local districts that feed into those two regional schools are Upper Saddle River, Saddle River, Allendale, Ho-Ho-Kiss, Whitecoff, Breck Lakes, and Oakland. So those 15 districts are what make up, are the member districts that are comprised of the region. As far as operationally and operations, the budget for the region is contributed from those 15 different school districts. So there's no one school district that is funding the entire budget. While we are the LEA for the region, so all their finances and transactions do go through the Mawa Board of Education, is not supported fully by Mawa or by the taxpayers of Mawa. Only Mawa's share is then contributed to them. The remaining portions of their budget to run the region and for its operations come from the remaining 14 districts. The region had for many years been maintained in Northern Highlands. Just recently, when you look at the lifespan of the region and how long it's been around, came to Mawa, it came to Mawa on July 1st of 2011, was when it transitioned from Northern Highlands over here to Mawa. It has two and a half employees, two full-time employees and one part-time. And while it had initially been for a couple of different services that ran through it, it's evolved into serving primarily transportation purposes. There is a superintendent's council, a BA's council, and child planning directors. We do meet regularly as a region to continually meet and review not only the transportation portion that the region currently runs, but also to find whether there are other efficiencies that can be achieved potentially through our districts. Just to highlight a couple of the statistics for the region, again, this is primarily for transportation purposes. The region currently works with over 31 different transportation vendors. Last year in '21, '22, the total amount of expenditures for transportation purposes was about $14 million. They ran almost 360 routes that again went to out-of-district placements, went to non-public schools for those 15 member districts. And there's also some districts outside of the region that come to us because of where our location is that request that we either bid or operate or maintain a route for them or control a route for them. So those were numbers for '21, '22. For this year, '22, '23, we did see an increase primarily because of price increases. We're now projected to do approximately $16 million worth of transportation contracts and expenditures compared to the $14 million from last year. For our audit, and if anybody takes a look at that for our financials, the region is, again, not within our operating budget directly. It's just our small portion that we do have to pay for anything that we contract the region with. It's considered an enterprise fund within our budget, oh, I'm sorry, within our audit for audit purposes. So if anybody takes a look at our audit and says where the region is, it is fully there, it is fully run through the Mawa Board of Education. But again, it's, the assessments are from all of the other 15 different member districts. So we just wanted to speak a little bit about that, educate a little bit more because it is very unique, our role in serving as LEA for the region. Any questions on the region or on the updates?
I just have a couple of, if there is a vacancy in the Region One staffing, who does the hiring for that position?
So if there is a vacancy, that would be done here at the, through Mawa because we are the lead agency and essentially those staff are employees of the Mawa Board of Education. So it would be done here. Those hirings, though, are often, if it's for one of the higher positions, such as the lead director position, while we haven't had to do hiring for that position sometime, the person who's in there right now has been there for some time. It would be done most likely with a small team from the various regions when we're ready to do that. Again, we haven't had to in some time.
And how is the budget for Region One established? Do you basically just tell all the 15 members, hey, you owe me a million, you owe me 1.3 million, please send checks to Mawa?
It does, it definitely varies a little bit per year. One of the biggest drivers of budget and how the assessment is allocated to the different districts, it's based on enrollment. It's based on just general ed enrollment as well as enrollment of special ed students, the number of special ed students that they have. There is a common state report that all districts in the state have to fill out in October. It's the ASSA report, application for state school aid. That has a lot of enrollment data in it and what has been agreed upon for several years before I came to be business administrator here at Mawa is that the data from that enrollment port would be submitted and used to help drive and determine how the assessment is going to be allocated.
And I recall at past audit reviews, Heidi talks about Region One, Heidi, our auditor, talks about Region One as a separate element of our overall district audit. But essentially, our audit includes the Region One operation, right?
Yeah, it does. The Region One, because their finances, again, are run through, for lack of a better term, through the Board of Education and through Mawa, all of their expenditures, any purchases they have are covered within our audit.
And their, and our treasurer's report includes the funds available in Region One. That's the, is that the Fund 52, 53?
Correct, correct. So it's kept, we go at two great levels to make sure that no funds are commingled and that they are completely kept on our books but in a separate dedicated section.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Dr. Dettoro, you met recently with the superintendents from the region. I'm just curious, how many were able to attend the meeting?
So out of the 15, eight did attend. And the other ones, unfortunately, there was something that came up. Yeah, during that meeting, what we worked on, and I really took the lead from the directors of special services and from the BAs, we really tried to replicate that model of talking through of how we can look to partner with other districts along the lines of shared services, staffing opportunities, connections specific to professional development and partnering there. So there's a lot of opportunities that we can create. It was our first meeting. We have our next meeting in May. And everyone who was in attendance and the ones who even couldn't come very much appreciated the opportunities that we can have in the future.
Thank you for doing that.
Yes, thank you.
I just had a quick question, Mr. Bleeker, on, is the reason we took the lead based on enrollment? Are we the largest district or why did it come to us in 2011? Or do we, do we know, or do you know?
I do not, I do not know the details of the particulars. Again, I wasn't here at that time.
Or your tenure.
But to answer your question, no, we are not the largest in the region. If I'm not mistaken, I think Ridgewood is the largest district in the region.
All right. Thank you very much. Very informative, Mr. Bleeker. Thank you very much. I'm enjoying getting to know all sorts of things about our district. Thank you. All right. Dr. Fair, our assistant supervisor, I'm sure you have an informative report too.
Yes, probably not nearly as informative as Mr. Bleeker's, but I appreciate him providing us with that history. So the first piece, we have our retirement, Agenda Item 17A. Ms. Dorothy Kraus. So we are happy to recognize and honor Mrs. Kraus, who has served as an instructional paraprofessional for the past 25 years in our district. We want to thank Mrs. Kraus for her dedication and pride in supporting the students and staff of Joyce Kilmer School. According to Dr. Bowie and Ms. Adams, principal and assistant principal over at JK, Mrs. Kraus is one of those colleagues that is always there to help. Most often, her support requires no direction and was based on her passion to be helpful wherever help was needed. We are certainly going to miss Mrs. Kraus's sense of humor and the daily laughs that she has shared over at JK from the lunchroom to the main office. Additionally, we thank Dorothy for her friendship and love she has shown to our students and colleagues over the years. Please know that you will be missed and we wish you the very best in your retirement. Second piece, you also have the kindergarten registration letter at your places. Approximately five years ago, we decided to centralize our kindergarten registration process to give those parents who are either new to the district or have their first child entering the school have an opportunity to interface with our secretaries as well as our building leadership in person prior to starting a district. So we're excited to continue that centralized process. You'll see on the second or third page, just to provide you with some logistical context, the manner with which parents will be able to set up appointments is through a Google form. So there's a link for each building and parents are able to sign up and show up at one of those slots where our office staff will be greeting them. It will also be hosted, again, as was the case in previous years, at our Thunderbird tank. The third piece, as Mr. De Silva was making comment to the thoughtfulness of the STEAM facility, some of you might have noticed I jumped on my computer because I wanted to, I don't know if Dr. Dettoro shared this, or I believe he may have shared this with the board via email. We were, just to provide some specificity, we were one of 19 K-12 schools that were awarded this honor from ITEEA nationwide. So from Hawaii to Texas, there were a few in Florida, but we were the only school in New Jersey. So I just feel like that's, that's important to note if we haven't already. And if we have, I think it's worthy of repeating. And that's it for this evening.
All right. Thank you. And thank you, Dr. Fair. Appreciate that. And it was very informative as well. Thank you. And Mr. Bleeker has something else to share?
Just one item I forgot, one item I forgot.
So we're back.
For the, for the agenda, we did have to, since it's posting on the website on Monday, there were a couple of corrections and adjustments, is better word, that I needed to be made. So for the benefit of anybody who looked at the agenda online that was posted, just to briefly review what they are, we did have to have on the other, new business, other section, we added two resolutions for additional instruction that some of our students need and require. Those are on the agenda that everybody has in front of you, Items S and T on page seven. And then we also had to make an adjustment to item, this is item S on the agendas that you should have, the summer music program coordinator here. We had to have a last minute adjustment to coordinate for that position. So again, the previous agenda that was sent is different from this one. We did have to make an adjustment. And the last one was something that was posted on the agenda previously. This was item 17C on the agenda that has been removed and will not be acted on it, required to be rescinded. Those are the updates that we have for the agenda.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, my report. So first, I just want to say congratulations to the entire administrative team on the recent awards that we've received. And I think the interesting thing is the fact that you've been able to seek out and, you know, find these awards that fit well with our district because there's all sorts of stuff out there, but sometimes it's refining and finding it. So again, thank you very much to everyone who's participated in that. I wanted to just also highlight and give a special thanks to Chris Raggy of Channel Two News, the Cale family, Athletes for Action, Mawa Sports Boosters, and the Mawa Schools Foundation for helping to promote awareness of sudden cardiac death in student athletes in memory of Marcus Cale. Through their efforts and fundraising, approximately 140 Mawa High School students were voluntarily tested, evaluated, were voluntarily tested, evaluated, received cardiac screenings. So again, a very important piece of health and I was quite astounded with how many athletes actually have underlying cardiac issues and are, sometimes go undetected. And any additional information, I think, is on our website or on the Twitter feed for the Marcus Cale Legacy for Life Foundation. We also received information from Ramapo Ridge Middle School that the math counts team came in fourth place out of twenty-two teams at Saturday's competition held at Bergen Community College. And the participants, there were nine Ramapo Ridge Middle School students, Alok Patel, Soham Kaushai, Akansh Nama, Albert Wen, Vaishnavi Mudumbi, Ariyand Ingram, Sriya Agarwal, and Prem Doshi. So congratulations, and it's exciting to see that in areas of math and science that goes with our STEAM initiatives. Also, congratulations, there were seven students accepted into the Twenty Twenty-Three Intermediate Region One Chorus, A Desai, E Gay Nulina, S Lee, V Mudumbi, A Singh, D Thirumala, and S Velour. I also wanted to give a shout out to Dr. Dittor and Courtney Corella because they had an opportunity to present at the New Jersey Department of Education and with other educators and talking about the Mawa's Gifted and Talented Program. So they spoke about the programs we have, how we identify students, and the supports that are in place. So again, showing Mawa leading the way, getting also the, you know, information out there and our name out there. So appreciate that and thanks to Courtney Corella for pushing forward our Gifted and Talented Program and really innovating it. Really appreciate that. Mawa High School had several participants in the All North Jersey Region One Symphonic Orchestra, Jean Chune, Sri Samithi Vamadipati, George Calcanis, and K. of Goel. And I also noticed where a lot of Hundred Day Celebrations, K through Five, so that's exciting and congratulations for getting through a hundred days. That's not quite, is that like a midway? No, more than midway, more than midway. So you are over them. All right, anyway, congratulations. Thanks, everyone. All right, let's move on to board committee reports. Who do I have this evening? Ms. Davinero, thank you.
Hello, friends. Happy Wednesday. I want to start by wishing Mr. De Silva a very happy thirtieth birthday.
Thirty.
Good one for you, we're very happy. Dr. Morty took a lot of my points.
Again, I took two things.
You took the Hundred Days of School Celebration and you know them all about it. Anyways, a couple things for you guys. February is Black History Month. It's celebrated annually during the month of February to coincide with the birthdays of Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass. And it acknowledges and celebrates the important contributions of people of African descent traditions, life, and culture. It was first celebrated in eighteen twenty-six during the second week of February, was expanded to the full month in eighteen seventy-six. President's Days is coming Monday. Although the holidays most often referred to as President's Day, the observed federal holidays officially called Washington's Birthday. As we know, George Washington's birthday is observed as February twenty-second, but he was actually born on February eleventh. When he was born, the Julian calendar was in use. During Washington's lifetime, people in Great Britain and America switched to the official calendar system from the Julian to the Gregorian calendar. As a result, people born after seventeen fifty-two were to add eleven Bs to their birthdays. It's wild.
Kristin dropping off.
I'm just full of random stuff. February is also American Heart Month. Definitely get screened, get tested, get monitored. There's all sorts of lurking things that you may not know are there and you'd like to know before it is too late. It is also Children's Dental Health Awareness Month. Happy Valentine's Day yesterday to those who chose to celebrate. However, a holiday more my speed is tomorrow, which is National Do a Grouch a Favor Day. It is a call to kindness on February sixteenth. Everyone knows a grouch and some of us may even be guilty of being one. On February sixteenth, maybe you can find one to find the sweeter side of them. Appropriate holiday. A couple other little things that are going on, two sixteen, which is tomorrow, is the eighth grade parent night being held at the Mawa School Auditorium. And coming up the first week of March, March second, is Cat in the Clubhouse. This is open to all of our pre-K through five students, where they will be having read-alongs between six and seven at the various schools' locations to be announced soon. That's all for that. A couple committee themes. As Dr. Dittor alluded to earlier, we met with community relations last week. We just talked a little bit about, you know, how do we get our name out there? As Dr. Dittor was saying, we're doing a lot of amazing things here and we just want to make sure that the community at large also knows what we're doing. So we talked a little bit about what that communication looks like going out, whether it be press releases and social media usage and how do we speak to not just our school community, but the larger community that is here. We talked a little bit, obviously, about the Thunderbird partnership, how to attract more people to register for it. We talked about, you know, consistent and clear communication, which I think we do a great job of as a district. At this point, I think we're almost over communicators, which is the best side of that spectrum to be on. And then communication coming out of our schools, is everything consistent? Is, are all parents getting the same information, which I think that we have come a long way and we're all pretty happy with what communication looks like at this point. We met with Transportation last week also. Our first meeting of this year was essentially an overview of what we did last year for our new members who joined the committee. We talked a little bit about why we formed, what we're trying to do. Last year was really great, we kind of just dug into transportation as a whole. What does that look like in Mawa with the town so big? What does that look like when you're offering courtesy buses to all of your K through Five students? In the fall, we welcomed Ms. Tracy Spindler to being Director of Transportation. She has done a wonderful job in the role so far, so we applaud her for all of the work that she does. This year, we're being a little bit more data-driven, so we've started collecting data as far as ridership numbers go with the help of administration at the various buildings who are very literally counting students as they're getting on and off buses that we can understand. You know, we talk a lot about transportation in town and we hear a lot from parents who maybe want it, but it's not offered to them or vice versa. So we started really looking at who's actually riding the bus and those numbers are pretty extensive. So we're looking at two to three dates a month where we're clapping how many students are getting on and off buses. We want to collect that data really through the spring so that we have a clear picture. There's no anomalies that are built in. So far, it is very consistent. The numbers are not peaking anywhere or valleying anywhere, it's consistent across the board. So once we have a little bit more data under our belts, we'll be sharing that out with everybody and then kind of looking at what we want to do. So when you look at the numbers, you can see who is and isn't riding the bus. My point out to Mr. Bleecker was we don't know what the why is. We can make a lot of assumptions. I know why my kids are or not on the bus, so we've talked a little bit about how do we collect that information from the community? Is it, you know, surveys, is it Google forums? I mean, we're talking through that as a committee, what do we want to do next to understand the whys? And then as we build through that this year, going into next year, it'll be if we are to implement any changes, and it's not to say that we will, but we will have data and information under our belt to decide, do we want to change something, do we want to keep it the same? And really a very, you know, numbers don't lie rationale as to why. One last update, Access For All had their meeting last week. We have worked really hard to build that relationship between the community and the board. You know, we are at a place now where I was able to sit with them. There were multiple members from Access For All who took place in our equity audit round tables, so there was a very honest and open conversation about what they thought, what they shared, and we were able to have a really good conversation about the parents who were sitting at that table, have students, students or children or family members who went through special education and special services in Mawa at some point or another, whether now or years ago when their children were younger. And we were able to have a really great conversation about what their experiences looked like. I have been able to foster a relationship with them. We were able to have sensitive conversations. Some people had great experiences, some people maybe didn't, depending on when they came through the schools, and they were able to trust me with the information and the feedback. And all of those conversations are just, are good information for us, right? Nobody's one story is the absolute truth of what goes on in Mawa, but it's good that we've built that partnership now where they can sit and have those conversations with me and know that there's no judgment, there's no falling on deaf ears. I'm there to listen. They don't necessarily ask me a lot of questions, I definitely don't try to speak on behalf of the board when I'm there, but I'm just kind of a sounding board for them and then all that information can be really filtered back at the end of the day. So it's just a great partnership. I appreciate Dr. Dittor and Mr. Zoh, you know, helping amplify the community events that they're having that might be good for some of our own student population and really trying to bridge that gap and make sure that that whole population in our student body is getting all the services they can get from the township of Mawa. That's all I got.
Thank you, Ms. Davinero. I think I kind of taken too much, you had very good information to share, so thank you. Any other board committee reports this evening? Mr. Denise?
The Policy Committee has two policies on tonight's agenda for our first meeting. These are just minor language changes as part of our review and update of the year for the past six years.
Thank you, Mr. Denise. Anyone else? Mr. Gallo?
Just briefly, on behalf of negotiations, we have met twice with the MEA so far. We've had productive dialogue and conversation with them, and we are moving to our third meeting next Thursday.
Twenty-second.
On the twenty-second, I'm sorry, on the twenty-second. Again, very much like our last round of Contractor New, the process has been a positive exchange of ideas and proposals with thoughtful reflection on the conditions of employment in our district, between the district and the MEA, and I'm very optimistic that we will continue that trend.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Okay, any additional board member remarks or additional comments? Mr. De Silva?
Just real quick, I want to make sure everybody knows about the Mawa Schools Foundation Gala coming up on April thirteenth at Macaluso's Allform. This is their twentieth anniversary, so it should be a big one, so save the date and to buy tickets, you're at mawaschoolsfoundation.org.
Thank you, Mr. De Silva. Mr. Kizmarsky?
I was very excited about the Schools Foundation.
And I'm glad Mr. De Silva reported that on that, that's excellent, thank you. All right, shall we move to new business? We have A to H eight, oh, hold on.
Just before you vote, something that I can share, again, a thank you. Sixteen U, we have another donation. That donation was made by Orange and Rockland. That is to support our robotics program, that's to help them with the build. But if you look at not only Sixteen U, you can also look at Sixteen V, they're also serving as a sponsor for our robotics program. So not only do we have outside companies within Mawa and parents, now we have an outside organization of Orange and Rockland helping us provide experiences for our students. So again, the donation from Orange and Rockland, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. So can we now, we'll now take, thank you for all the donations, we'll take new business, A to HH, I need a motion. Mr. Gallo, second by Ms. Seco. All right, Mr. Bleecker?
Okay, Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes, except I'm standing on three checks. Check number one-one-zero-zero-three-eight, check number one-one-zero-one-one-seven, and check number one-one-zero-two-one-six.
Thank you. Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarsky?
Yes.
Dr. Park?
Yes.
Ms. Seco?
Yes, and thank you to our two generous donors.
Ms. Davinero?
Yes.
And Dr. Morty?
Yes. All right, now let's take new business personnel. I'd like to take Seventeen A separately, like to recognize the retirement, especially given the twenty-five years of dedication and service to our schools. So, motion for Seventeen A. Mr. Kizmarsky, second by Ms. Seco. Mr. Bleecker, please?
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarsky?
Yes.
Dr. Park?
Yes.
Ms. Seco?
Yes.
Ms. Davinero?
Yes.
And Dr. Morty?
Yes. All right, now we'll take the remaining Seventeen, B to AA, need a motion. Ms. Seco, second by Mr. Denise. Mr. Bleecker?
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes, and I just want to say thank you to the businesses on Seventeen X who are participating in our option two program, and I also wish Dennis well at the job fairs.
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarsky?
Yes.
Dr. Park?
Yes.
Ms. Seco?
Yes.
Ms. Davinero?
Yes.
And Dr. Morty?
Yes. Public questions or comment? Public participation at board meetings is in accordance with Bylaw Oh-one-six-seven. At this time, members of the public may ask questions or make a comment on educational issues or school matters of community interest. It's a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. I need a motion to open to the public, Mr. De Silva, second by Mr. Hughes. Okay, we are open to the public. Seeing no one coming forward, I need a motion to close to the public. Mr. Kizmarsky, second by Mr. Gallo. All right, we do not need an additional executive session, so let me get a motion to adjourn our meeting this evening, Mr. De Silva, and second by Mr. Kizmarsky. All right, we are officially adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone, have a good evening.